Okay.
I am.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for April 17th, 2023. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. For convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually using the go-to access information found on our website. Do note, however, that public comment will only be available in person during this meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Those viewing the meeting remotely will not be able to provide public comment via the remote meeting access. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry is absent due to illness. Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Krichel.
Here.
Alderman Crokenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
And Alderman Widener.
Here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we get to start the meeting this evening with two proclamations. First of all, for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And now therefore I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Warrenville. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and attend the Arbor Day celebration at the Warrenville Park District Recreation Center gym on Saturday, April 29th, 2023, starting at 10:00 a.m. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. We also have Earth Day coming up. Whereas Earth Day is an opportunity to renew America's commitment to preserving and protecting the state of our environment through community service and responsible stewardship, and whereas the global theme for Earth Day 2023 is Invest in Our Planet, which focuses on engaging governments, institutions, businesses, and the more than 1 billion citizens who participate annually in Earth Day to do their part, everyone accounted for, everyone accountable. And whereas Earth Day lets recognize the role that each of us can play to increase awareness about the importance of environmental education and spur progress towards global environmental and climate literacy, and whereas the city supports through its Environmental Advisory Commission development of educational and informational programs and materials that promote environmental awareness and behavior. And now therefore I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023, as Earth Day in the City of Warrenville and encourage all citizens to learn about the ways they can improve the environment, both worthy days of celebration. Okay, this is the part of the meeting we set aside every Monday night for citizens' comments. We have two folks who have signed up this evening. We'll begin with Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. The City of Warrenville borrowed $2.2 million from the Citizens Sewer and Water Capital Fund years ago for TIF III expenditures. What if there was a 5% simple interest rate? What amount of revenue would the citizens be receiving? That's almost 50% of the total property tax revenue. If we add the $1.7 million to the $2.2 million that was borrowed, we would have just under $4 million that the city would have. If we took the lower interest rate of the $9 million bond issue that the city just signed, we would still have $1.2 million in revenue. Many times I've heard you state that TIF I is the best TIF in the state. The City of Warrenville loaned TIF I $1.5 million with an 8% interest rate to benefit and protect the citizens. Unfortunately, you are not following the protective features that were designed for TIF I to protect the citizens. You are on the wrong side of opportunity costs.
Thank you, Bob. Now we have Vivian Lund.
I really want to say two things. One is I'm really sorry to hear that Ron is finally retiring, and I want everyone to know this city will sorely miss his services. He started in my second term, I don't know, sometime between '89 and what year? 90, 91? Whatever. If without Ron, we would not have the development that we have in our city that has been so positive through all these years. And there's no way that any of you would be able to picture the little office that he had and all of these big developers that came in with 14 big rolls of plans, and he was just buried in paper. And so I just, I just, he'll be missed. But what I really came for tonight was to thank you again. I'm still treasurer of the July, of the Friends of the Fourth, and I just want to thank the city for your continued support of this group of volunteers who are so dedicated to bring a really nice, appropriate celebration of the Fourth of July to our community. And, you know, there are a handful of people that have six meetings, and they plan this event and carry it through, but only because the city supports with equipment and employees, the police department and the public works. It's just a stellar representation from the city employees, and they all do such a wonderful job. And then we have a lot of volunteers on the weekend, but, or on the 3rd and the 4th. It's not going to be a weekend this year. And so I just want to thank you again and encourage you to continue your support. And I know it won't take a lot of encouragement. I think you already recognize how much you get from a small group of planners who are volunteers. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Vivian. And just so you have an idea of scale, Ron's first office was about twice the size of his table that he's sitting at right now. And I recall, the first time I walked into it, I figured I'd have to back out. I couldn't turn around to get back out. He got a lot done in that little tiny office. Okay, we'll move on to mayor and staff comments. I have a couple of things this evening. One, a reminder about the elected officials' reception that will be held on Monday, May 1st, in the lobby outside the City Council chambers from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., recognizing the dedicated service of former Alderman Bob Wilson, who retired from the council in 2021, and current Alderman Leah Goodman and Jeff Krichel. We will also be recognizing and welcoming re-elected Alderman Stuart Ashower, newly-elected Alderman John Lockett, Craig Crokenberg, Judy Wilke, and John Paul Augustinowitz, and Treasurer Maury Goodman. The Western Chamber, Western DuPage Chamber of Commerce has graciously agreed to host the event for the city. They always do a nice job, and we, of course, thank everyone for their service to the community. We have, as former mayor mentioned, a retirement reception planned for Director Mensah in recognition of the many years, I believe 28 and a half years, if I have it right, of service of the city and the community. The city will be hosting a public retirement reception for Ron on Monday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the lobby outside the council chambers. Do come and wish Ron well, as he says he's not going anywhere, but the connection will be a little less strong going forward, and we will miss him. So again, that is Monday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., right here at the council, outside the council chambers. And finally, I had the pleasure to swear in a new police officer today with the chief. It is always a pleasure to me to see the quality of the young people that are attracted to come to Warrenville and excited about being a police officer in Warrenville, and they've been around a bit, so they know what's out there, and they choose Warrenville. A huge compliment to our department chief. That's all I have this evening. Clerk? Okay, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yes, I wanted to remind everybody that our document shredding day is coming up. That's going to be May 6th in the Bauer Elementary School parking lot, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. You can bring three banker-sized boxes or paper grocery bags per vehicle, and you can recycle small electronics for free, but larger electronics need a voucher, and there's information about how to do that on the city website. So please come on May 6th, and we'll get some documents and electronics recycled.
And come early, because there's usually a line.
Yes, and sometimes the truck fills up, so yeah, be on time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Davalos.
Thank you. Well, Alderman Goodman, I thought, that was very interesting, but I thought you might have another announcement about Fermilab and what's happening out there in the springtime. Should I do it? We have our first baby bison being born, I think, Thursday, where you sent an email, Thursday, last Thursday, the first one. You can go out there, it's absolutely amazing to see them, because they jump around and they're just adorable. There's also a bison cam that Fermilab has put out, and you can find a link on their website. And a lot of us wait all year for the beginning of April, the mid-April, till we can see the new ones coming along. So if you have never seen them, you should pop out there and see. My next, the last thing I want to say is about, a little bit of details about Arbor Day. So one of the really nice things about Arbor Day is they give small seedlings, actually some of them are a little bit bigger than small, out for free. And I can't remember all of them this year. I know they're going to be giving out elderberry, red bud, ninebark, and swamp oak, and maybe a weeping willow, I wasn't sure about that one. But anyway, so they're free, and I now have about a 12-foot oak that I planted about eight years ago with one of those little sprigs, and it is unfortunately about to hit the telephone wires. But anyway, it's a lot of fun to go home and see how, see how it works planting, so. There's also, the other kind of interesting thing that we're doing this year is, if you guys remember, on the old Strasdy Piano Factory, which is now right at the corner of Butterfield and Batavia, was an absolutely magnificent magnolia. And through the work really of Warrenville and Bloom and several people that really pushed it, the city paid to have a lot of small branches by an arborist removed from that tree and planted. And they are now ready. We always thought we would find a way to get them to people in the community. Mayor Lund, you'll probably be getting one, and Emily. But they are going to be given to, one to each school in the, in the community, probably several planted on city property, and there are different sized ones out there, but they're going to have a silent auction for those, or a drawing, like a lottery. You buy a ticket, or you get a ticket, or I don't know. I think you pay a little bit for a ticket. And so that's going to be happening out there. There's tables, it's happening at Park District, and there are tables with all kinds of environmental information, interesting things, there's, they're raffling off things for adults and kids, and there's snacks. So it's actually a very fun, it's 10 to 12 on the 29th. So if you, if that's, time is available to you, it is a very fun place to be on that Saturday morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. It is really fun to see the young bison out there playing. You would not expect that from those huge monster critters that move very slowly for the most part and walk around. I remember riding a bike out there one time and seeing a couple of them circling what appeared to be their mother, just jumping and having a gale time, and she was, of course, ignoring them, but they were like little calves, like cattle, very cool. My other bison story involves riding my bike also. I was riding my bike coming back from Kirk Road one day, and I was on the trail, and of course, on the other side of the road and the trail were all the bison, and at some point, one of them had broken through the fence, and a couple of cars had stopped and were watching this thing, and I'm riding my bike, and I'm thinking, nah, he's over there, I'm over here, I can go back, or I can try to sneak through in my red helmet and my red jersey on my red bike. So I cranked it up to about 30 miles an hour and felt very safe at the time, until I found out later that can sprint about 45 miles an hour. So I'm very happy to be here tonight. But go out and see the calves, they're pretty cool. Administrator, good evening, Christina.
Good evening. Quick update, there is a memo, a supplemental memo on the dais with information regarding the ride DuPage Uber access program. I just brought that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And C.D. Attorney, Brooke, good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to mention that Elrod Friedman, the law firm that I work at, is putting on a half-day seminar, and Cedar staff and all the elected officials, including newly-affected, elected officials who will take office in May, are also invited. So I just wanted to highlight that. If you didn't get it for some reason in your inbox, let me know, I can forward it to you. And if you have any questions, let me know. It's going to be on, I just lost the date. It's going to be on May 12th, Friday, May 12th. It's just in the afternoon, and it's at the Glenn Club in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to move on to the business of the meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the April 17th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, any changes? Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to remove six Q.
Six Q.
The motioner agrees.
And what about the second?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one adjustment. Okay, motion then for the approved, or for the amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, and agenda is accepted as amended. We have several sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
Yes, I move to approve the minutes of the April 3rd, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2023 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Meeting, and finally, to approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2023 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Closed Session.
Second.
Second again by Alderman Davalos. Any comments or questions? Alderman Goodman?
I do have a comment. I want to thank the clerk and the deputy clerk for doing such a great job these past few years on the minutes. I think this has been a difficult thing to learn, it's not an obvious, you know, skill that everybody has to do every day. You're doing such a great job, and I really appreciate your hard work on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, and the minutes are approved as presented. Now, I would just advise you to get comfortable. This may, this may take a while. I should have brought some ice water. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, Offer Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-13, Adopting the City of Warrenville FY 2024 Municipal Budget. B, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-14, Establishing a Schedule of Job Classifications and Authorized Personnel Strength for FY 2024. C, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-15, Amending Section 5-4-2 of the City Code Regarding Stop Intersections. D, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-16, Amending the City Code Zoning Ordinance Regarding Cannabis Business Establishments. E, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-17, Amending the City Code Zoning Ordinance Regarding Chicken Coops and Application Filing Procedures. F, Accept Staff Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-18, Amending the City Code Title III, Chapter II, to Decrease the Number of Class A1 Liquor Licenses From Five to Four. G, Accept Staff Recommendation, Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-19, Amending City Code Title III, Chapter II, to Increase the Number of Class A3 Liquor Licenses From One to Two. H, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2023-16, Approving a Professional Services Agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc., for the West Two and Three Basins Manhole Rehabilitation in the Amount of $76,410. I, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2023-17, Approving the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with PACE and Direct Staff to Add the Uber Service Option for Warrenville Residents. J, Accept Staff Recommendation and Pass Ordinance, Pass Resolution R2023-18, Awarding the Contract for the 2023 Road Program to Geneva Construction Company of Aurora, Illinois, in the Amount of $1,642,325.64. Those big numbers. K, Accept Staff Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2023-19, Approving a Contract with Engineering Resource Associates, Inc., for Construction Engineering Services for the 2023 Road Program in the Amount of $97,550 plus reimbursable expenses. L, Accept Staff Recommendation, Pass Resolution R2023-20, Awarding a Contract for the Virginia and Central Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements Project to A Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc., in the Amount of $1,398,960.99. M, Accept Staff Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2023-21, Approving a Contract with Engineering Resource Associates, Inc., for Construction Engineering Services for the Virginia and Central Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements Project in the Amount of $94,550 plus reimbursable expenses. N, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Approve the Addition to the New Initiative, to the FY 2024 Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Work Plan. O, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Approve the Updates to the Enterprise Maintenance and Replacement Plan per staff, per the staff memo dated April 5th, 2023, and direct staff to incorporate those adjustments into an updated EMRP document. P, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Approve the Updates to the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Plan per the staff memo dated April 5th, 2023, and direct staff to incorporate those adjustments into an updated CMRP document. R, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Harlan Davis as Chairman of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a one-year term set to expire April 30th, 2024. S, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Terry Bosch as Chairman of the Environmental Advisory Commission for a one-year term set to expire April 30th, 2024. T, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Amy Krichel as Chairman of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission for a one-year term set to expire April 30th, 2024. U, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Monica Johnson as the Chairman of the Tourism and Arts Commission for a one-year term set to expire April 30th, 2024. V, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Kirk Tate as Commissioner of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. W, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Charles Sicarus as Commissioner of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. X, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Terry Bosch as Commissioner of the Environmental Advisory Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. Y, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Cecilia Gerber as Commissioner of the Environmental Advisory Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. Z, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Reappointment of Robin Pilfry as Commissioner of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. A.A., accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Sarah Phelan as Commissioner of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. B.B., accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Linda Osborne as Commissioner of the Tourism and Arts Commission for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 26. C.C., accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Daniel Leonard as Commissioner of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a three-year term set to expire April 30th, 2026. D.D., accept, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Meeting held on February 16th, 2023. E.E., receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Meeting held on March 14th, 2023. F.F., receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting held on April, on March 23rd, 2023. G.G., accept and file minutes, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting held on April 6th, 2023. H.H., receive and file report of invoices paid up to April 12th, 2023 in the amount I.I., authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before May 20, May 1st, 2023 in the amount of $331,744.21. And J.J., receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of March 23 and the amount of $16,028.30. Alderman Widener?
Yes, we certainly had everything from A to Z on tonight's agenda, and then some. And with that, I may move to approve the agenda presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second. Second. Alderman Lockett, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we will go back now to item Q. Alderman Goodman, did you wish someone else to make that motion? Would someone like to make Alderman, make that ocean, motion? Alderman Davalos?
Yes, uh, hang on for just a second, I gotta. I would like to make a motion to accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize staff to continue placing orders for scheduled vehicle and equipment replacements as ordering, as ordering opportunities happen, and prevent, and present the City Council at the next available committee of the whole meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Crishell. Discussion, Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I understand that the, the purchase of the five vehicles, which was discussed at the last meeting in great detail, is not on this agenda because of the bids that came in for the road program this week being unfortunately more expensive than we'd hoped. But there wasn't any information in here about my questions on the maintenance of the vehicles that we have and how we're coping with vehicles that are past their, I suppose you could say, expected life. One of the things that I've been pleased about in our city's keeping an eye on taxpayer dollars is that just because a vehicle is scheduled to be replaced doesn't necessarily always mean that it is replaced. When you have a broadly phrased provision like this that gives all scheduled vehicle and equipment replacements to the discretion of staff, then that takes away some pretty significant oversight from the City Council. It takes away, for instance, some public works vehicles are extremely expensive, much higher than a particular staff member's normal spending limit would be. I think having City Council oversight of this continue, as we have been doing in the past, is a, is a better option going forward. But in particular, I also think that having an opportunity to discuss these things before they happen at a City Council level has value, particularly in terms of getting questions answered about how staff is coping with vehicle shortages, what other resources might be available, what other options the City Council should consider in terms of setting policy priorities, the types of vehicles that we want in terms of hybrid versus only gas-powered. I think that those are important discussions to be had at the council level, and thus, I'm not going to vote in favor of this recommendation. But I am interested if the, if the police chief has the information that I asked for at the last meeting, which he, he wasn't at, if he has any feedback for us about how the vehicles that are still being used despite being past the time when we would normally have replaced them, how they're holding up, and what kind of maintenance costs we're having to deal with. Because we all know that we were supposed to be getting new vehicles that haven't come yet.
Chief?
I have to say, we're, we're making do because we, we have to. We have no idea when we're getting new vehicles, so we kind of have to drag it out. We're being very cautious, and we are monitoring our vehicles very closely because of that. What we start worrying about is the deterioration of the safety of the vehicle in the sense that when they have to be driven at, at higher rates of speed and, and put through all kinds of different tasks that normal cars aren't put through on a daily basis. So we do try to make our officers more aware of inspecting the vehicles, making sure that, you know, they have the proper tires on them, they have a proper oil level, they have a proper maintenance on them. We've been experimenting with different monitoring systems to make sure that we are keeping tabs of, all the vehicles have like electronics in them, so we have like the ODB, OBD plugs that we plug into the systems, and we're able to monitor them. But we're only able to do that with two of the newer cars that we have, where we could watch them from the computer and see exactly when they need a particular type of maintenance, how often they're being run, how often they're left running, especially during the winter months. So we could see the wear and tear and monitor them very closely, and again, be more cautious with them to try to drag them out. Again, not necessarily because we want to, but because we have to, because we don't know when new cars are coming in. To answer your question about other options out there, we've had discussions with this, about this with Public Works. And the thing is, is that there, there is hardly nothing available out there. There's no Fords out there. Right now, we just put in a bid for Dodges, and we have no timeframe of when we're going to get those in. And, you know, there, there are other options out there, but again, they're scarce. When you talk about some of the hybrids, they're even more scarce to get a hold of. So how long do we hang on to the gas-powered vehicles that we have just waiting for hybrids to come in? We, we don't know. And unfortunately, I wish I can answer that for you, but, and we're not the only ones in this situation. I've talked to other police departments that are in the same exact situation that we are. Irregardless of their size, or the amount of money they could spend, or anything like that, it doesn't matter, they're just not there. So I, I guess I don't have a simple answer for you, except that until we know when we're going to get cars in, we're just going to have to keep stretching it out and stretching it out and monitoring our vehicles very closely to see what we can do with, as long as we can.
Thank you. There was a resident who came to the last meeting, Mr. Sekatelli, who mentioned a Toyota police vehicle. Has staff had a chance in the last week to look into that?
We, we haven't looked into that closer. I know that with, I know that Toyota Camry came up, although I'm not tearing on anybody who drives a Toyota Camry on a daily basis, it's a fine car. I just don't know if it could hold the amount of equipment that our police cars carry now. I think the SUVs have now come commonplace with the amount of equipment. Our guys have AEDs in the back, they have shields in the back, they have all kinds of equipment that may not fit in a Toyota Camry anymore, like the cars used to. Maybe some of the SUVs perhaps, but even, I think the RAV4 was another one that had come up. And I believe even that might be too small, trying to fit somebody in the back of a squad who's handcuffed, you know, in the back, where I don't know if that would be feasible. Something like a Toyota Highlander might work, however, I don't even know if they're rated for a police vehicle. So we, we discussed it, and after your meeting last time, some of those vehicles, but I don't know if Toyota is ready to fully enter the market as far as with their police cars yet. They might be just as scarce as some of the other vehicles, but that I don't know for sure. But we did discuss it.
Okay, well, I think that if you're getting to the stage where the vehicles that you're using are breaking down, or if we have excessive costs for repairs, that thinking about smaller vehicles might be something you're going to have to consider, if that's what we can buy and finding ways to, to make that work. I certainly hope that hybrid vehicles become more available. I know that, you know, there are incentives now for ramping up production of hybrid vehicles, and that we're all hoping that within some relatively short period, this backlog will become better. But, but I do think that as a general rule, going forward, that scheduling vehicle and equipment replacements according to our plans isn't enough to just do without City Council oversight, and having staff only order things without approval from the City Council wouldn't be my preference. And thank you for the update on the discussions and the, the maintenance of the current fleet.
Sure. One more thing I can add, but Alderman, unfortunately, the thing is that sometimes we get certain windows where we can order vehicles, and if we don't jump on it right away, where we get our order in right away, we lose that window and that opportunity to order that vehicle. I don't know if, if, we're not trying to like get anything by on the City Council or anything like that, but sometimes we get a last-minute word from the vendor saying, there's an opening to order windows right now, and then we're kind of stuck because, you're right, we can't get the immediate oversight from the council, but our hands are tied, then what are we supposed to do? Because once we miss that window, we miss that opportunity to get those vehicles as well. So I don't know if that's something that we also need to discuss and maybe streamline something, or come up with, with, with something else, but we're seeing that also as a trend now where you're getting a window last minute, you need to order the vehicles now, and then we're kind of stuck. So I just wanted to add that as well, as possibly something for future discussion, too.
I mean, is it possible that you could come to councils with, you know, a maximum price and a type of vehicle that you want to order when it becomes available? Something like that, something that's similar to the quotes that we've generally approved in the past?
Yeah, I'm sure as we move forward, we could probably come up with a plan as we know, but I think as we've seen, like, for example, with the Dodges, we got wind of that last minute, and they were like, okay, we have Dodges available, you need to place an order in within this amount of time. And now we're like, oh dear, what do we do? We got to get, we got to get that order in right away. So again, moving forward, as we become more familiar with the trends of what's going on in society with the vehicles, we can adapt to that. I, I guess we're just seeing a strange phenomenon with this recently, and, and I guess we're just going to have to figure out a way to adapt to the situation where we do get this done without, you know, with having the proper oversight and not, you know, have anything kind of slip by or anything.
I mean, pardon me if I contradict you, but I believe we were told last week that the Dodge window was still open, and it's been a few months. So this seems like exactly the situation in which there would have been time to get City Council oversight.
Okay, if that's the case, then, I, I was not aware that it was still open. I thought that was something that we, the way I understood it was that's something we had to get on right away. So, but maybe I misunderstood it as well, so. Again, we could, we could clarify that, and as we move forward, we could come up with something and figure that out.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
City Administrator White?
Thank you. I just want to add that the staff's preference would be to continue the policies that we have followed in having council approval before we make big purchases. This is a little bit of a unique situation that we find ourselves in with vehicles. We are still evaluating whether a vehicle needs to be replaced. So by no means are we necessarily just ordering vehicles at the time that they're scheduled to be replaced. We are still evaluating whether those vehicles need to be replaced. Generally, the police squad vehicles get replaced on a regular schedule because of the wear and tear. That is a different situation than a public works vehicle, or a big plow, or even the City Hall, City Hall vehicle. So those generally are placed on the same schedule because of the wear and tear that they regularly go through, so that, but that evaluation is still occurring. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Alderman Crishell?
Thank you. Yeah. In reference to this motion, to continue to have staff place orders when opportunities are available, I think is a good idea. Because of that time window between a committee, or a Public Works meeting, and then the next council meeting would happen, that could be a month lapse. And so I think if we can give that approval to at least place the orders, if the staff comes back and says, and presents to council, and for some reason, council doesn't want to do it, you can cancel the order. Clearly, they don't have a problem getting rid of these vehicles, right? So I think at least you get the order made, and then you can decide, you know, what, if there's multiple orders you want to make, or different vehicles, or something, I think that you can have those conversations at that time. So I, I support this.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, it was going to be my question. At the last meeting, it was they were going to get ordered, so we had ordered a total of 13. Now these five are coming off, okay, so then we're eight, but did we order those five, and we were able to cancel those five? Because I think that's important.
City Administrator White?
No. So Public Works Director Kukler was going to wait until we had our bid openings to determine if the five should be ordered, those bid openings higher, so he did not place the order.
And I guess for the chief, so knowing that, and just to summarize then, so we are, we only have an order in place right now for eight.
That's correct. We have the fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 vehicles ordered.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Very good. Could I have a roll call then, please? We have a motion in a second.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have nothing listed under the regular agenda. We have no unfinished business that needs to be discussed tonight. We have no new business that needs to be discussed. No need for a closed session. All we need is a motion to adjourn. Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you tonight. That's it.